Okay, good evening, everybody. It's six o'clock. I'll call this meeting to order tonight. Madam Clerk, would you please take roll?
Commissioner Dietrich?
Here.
Commissioner Long?
Here.
Commissioner Madrid?
Here.
Vice Chair Thomas is absent. Chair Ledoux?
And I am here, thank you. Do the Pledge of Alleges. Joe, would you like to lead us in that tonight, please? Thank you, sir.
May I ask everybody to stand up and direct your attention to the flag?
Great, thanks, Joe. All right, no presentations tonight. The agenda for tonight, are there any modifications to tonight's agenda?
There are no modifications from staff.
I understand we have one issue that we're going to continue. Do you want to talk about that now?
We can talk about that when we get to the item.
Got it, okay. So, can I get an approval for tonight's agenda? All in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to item number six, public comments. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone wishing to speak tonight on items that are not on tonight's agenda?
No, I do not have any requests to speak.
Thank you. Okay, item number seven, approval of the minutes. Can I ask the Planning Commission for approval of the June 14th, 2023, and June 28th, 2023 minutes? All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to consent calendar. There's nothing on our consent calendar tonight. And moving on to public hearing items, item number 9.1, the Garbani South tentative tract map. We'll need a motion in a second to continue the public hearing on this item to July 26, 2023, to allow the city and applicant to coordinate on the conditions of approval. This will be an electronic vote. We need a, it's a verbal, verbal motion in a second, right? I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay, that passes four to zero, thank you. So we'll continue that two weeks from now. Okay, moving on, item 9.2, the McCoy Residence variance. This is item 9.2. Could the Deputy Community Development Director please introduce this item?
Thank you, Chair. Good evening. Following item will be presented by Associate Planner Fernando Ariera.
Thank you, good evening, Honorable Chair, members of the Planning Commission. The project before us is for PLN 23-0094, for requested variance for the McCoy Residence. This is where the project is located. It's located off of Montana Street in the Quail Valley area. The zoning designation of the property is rural mountainous, RM, which requires a 10-acre minimum. Previously, the, under the county, the land used parcels in this area were zoned R1, which required a 7,200 square foot minimum. The proposed project came about because the applicant is working to establish a home, but the side yard setback for this zone is 25 feet. So the applicant has requested a variance to reduce that from 25 feet to five feet. The home is currently proposed at eight feet, eight inches. Section 9.1, 5.080B of the code allows us to reduce the setback for non-conforming lots to 15 feet, but due to the topography and constraints of this site, the home is proposed at eight feet, eight inches. Here we see where the setbacks would be for 25 feet. So as we can see, there would be a significant chunk of the home that would be taken away from the plotting if we were to maintain the 25-foot setback. These are the proposed elevations of the home. This is a picture of the site and video.
So that right there is the adjoining lots to the south, right?
Correct, to the, yeah, to the south.
That's actually the second lot, correct? There's two lots in between this?
Yes. So here we see an image of where the proposed home will be located and the two adjacent lots to the south of the property, as well as a hill to the north. These are the findings that would be required in order to grant the variance. Staff has taken a look at this and we have made all of the necessary findings. Per seque, the proposed project would be exempt for section 15303, new construction and conversion of small structures, as well as the common sense exception, section 15061B3, for the reduction of the side yard setback. It is staff's recommendation that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution approving variance number PLN 23-0094, subject to the conditions of approval and the findings and the conclusions in the staff report. This concludes staff's presentation. The applicant and staff are available for questions.
All right, thank you, Fernando. Appreciate that. Good presentation. This is our time to ask questions of the staff. I have a, I have a quick question to start this off. Can we go back, IT, can we go back to the presentation and go to the list of findings, please? So this is not something that we can just randomly say, hey, you know, this seems like a good idea, let's do it, or not. We actually have to make findings and, and as a reason, as a legitimate reason to do this. And these are all of the findings that support a decision to go ahead and allow the variance to a five-foot minimum setback.
That's correct.
Okay. And are any of them, are any of the findings unusual or abnormal that would, that would make this kind of, you know, arbitrary or unusual? If that makes any sense?
Yeah, so the findings for the variance, the site itself, the development of the site has to be an unusual circumstance, but the findings themselves, there's, there's nothing abnormal about the findings. So in this case, due to the topography of the site, as we have seen in the video, as well as the image, there is a high slope to the north and then towards, going towards the city limit, towards Canyon Lake, there is a steep slope going downward, which limits the development area for the proposed home.
Okay, thank you. Ben?
You mentioned in your presentation that under the county, it was previously zoned as rural residential one, right? Is that correct?
R1.
R1, right? And so what were the setbacks under that?
Five feet.
And are there surrounding houses on surrounding parcels? What are, what do the setbacks look in the area?
Yeah, so there are existing homes, which are also have, they meet the minimum five-foot setback, which was required at the time. So that actually helped us in regards to the findings, because one of the findings does discuss that.
That the surrounding houses have similar uses? Okay, great, thank you.
Commissioner Dietrich, just a point of clarification. The county zone was R1, which is single-family residential. Now rural, rural, it's, it's a different zone in designation, typically larger lots than the R1 standard designation.
Right, and then to go along with that, right, this, our rural mountainous requires 10-acre sites, right? And this parcel is not a 10-acre site, is that correct?
That's correct. Not only this parcel, but the surrounding parcels are not. So when this property was rezoned, essentially created legal non-conforming lots.
Thank you.
Yes, I have a question about the zoning. The parcel was previously zoned R1 by the county and then updated by the city. Can the owner of the parcel claim grandfathering the status in of the old zoning into the new one due to natural requirement, natural topography requirement?
Thank you, Commissioner. There isn't a process to claim grandfathering. What the city's code currently does have in its legal non-conforming chapter are provisions for lots that become legal non-conforming as a result of a code adoption, which has occurred here. The provisions in our code would have allowed the property owner to reduce his setback to 15 feet, as one of the provisions for a property that was created legally and then our code amendment create, made it legal non-conforming. Because of the existing site conditions, the 15-feet setback reduction that the code automatically would allow them to do from the 25 wasn't quite enough to avoid grading onto the steep hillsides and getting the home on the property as proposed. So that's why they're requesting the variance.
Okay. With the new improvement, the new construction of the residential house, would it impose any view obstruction to the adjacent parcel?
By adjacent parcel, could you clarify which one?
The one on the, the, I'm looking at the map, so the one on, the south, yes, yes.
There's obviously lots around in the, the proposed home, right? So the two lots that were referenced by Commissioner Madrid are vacant lots that are located on the south side. Those lots would not be impacted as, as the views are towards the west. There is an existing house on the east side, which actually sits lower. There's, there's a pretty steep slope as you go up to the pad. So the existing house there, it would slightly block the view, obviously. Once you construct something, obviously, it's, it's, there's going to be some view, limited views that are going to be blocked. The structure, it is significantly lower than what the code allows as well, but it's, it's not a significant obstruction, since they already sit lower and the hill itself kind of blocks the view.
Another concern that I have is the water runoff. If the setback is adjusted too close to adjacent property and the property is on a slope, on a deep, steep slope, so the water runoff, the setback may have a tremendous effect on the water runoff. So how is it going to be considered for?
Yes, so during the building process, the plans will be reviewed by the engineering department to ensure that it complies with all of the water quality and water management standards.
And just to further explain, the requirement, the requirement is that there has to be swells around the house that direct drainage, obviously away from the adjacent properties and basically directs those flows to the street.
Just to confirm the construction, the new construction, it's going to be a ranch style, a single-level ranch-style property?
Yes, based upon the siding, it is going to be a manufactured home, but it does have characteristics of the ranch style.
And the park in your garage is, is a detachment, is in front of the property?
Correct.
Just to be clear, so it is a manufactured home, so it's not like they can make, make it smaller. It is the size that it is. If they move it over, it's going to, it's going to encroach into the existing slope and that's the main reason we're asking, they're asking for this variance, right? It's not a site-built house?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Ben?
I just had one question about the code, with it being a non-conforming use and bringing it down to 15 feet, is that, is that by right? Would they be granted that by right? Okay, so we're going from 15 feet by right they could get and now we're at eight feet, eight inches, is what they're asking for. Thank you.
So you kind of answered my question, Orlando, when you said that you're going to have a swell on the side, so it's still going to have, a normal residential lot has a five-foot setback and it's plenty for that swell. And you look at this map and those parcels in the south that are adjacent to it, they're all perpendicular to the street. This one and the one next to it have very little frontage off that cul-de-sac. It's amazing they could fit this house in here this well because of the restraints of that rugged property. So, and I noticed there's only fire conditions of approval. So if fire is happy with the construction, that's, that's a big deal for me and fire sprinklers on that, too. So I think those are all great questions. But yeah, it's a, it's a tough lot, because it's only where you could put a house there. So, good job, you guys.
Okay, thanks, Randy. Any other questions for staff? Okay. I did something, I don't know what happened. I pushed a button on our, on my, IT, I'm, I need your, I need to be rescued here, sorry. My, my finger, I know. My hand hit this, hit the little doodad here and it blew the whole thing up. Technical difficulty, sorry. Wasn't that funny? Okay, moving on. So let's go ahead and open the public hearing. It is 6:18. Madam Clerk, was the notice, was this legally noticed?
Yes, it was legally noticed.
Thank you very much. And I know we've received some correspondence and it is in our blue folders, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
The commission has correspondence and it will also be added to the official record.
Very good, thank you. All right, do we have the applicant here tonight? Okay, do you want to join us up at the podium, please, and introduce yourself?
My name is Craig McCoy. I own the property.
Great, thank you for coming tonight. Just to start, just to start, you've been discussing the project with staff and you've been given a list of the conditions of approval. Do you agree to all of the agreed-upon conditions of approval for this project?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Okay. Commissioners, do we have any questions directly for the applicant? All right, Joe?
One general question. How are the reactions from your adjacent neighbors?
I haven't had any. I don't know.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you, sir, appreciate it. All right, Madam Clerk, are there any, are there any public comments on this item?
I do not have any requests to speak.
Okay. Ryan, did you want to speak tonight? I mean, we have your, we have your email, but it's a open, public forum and you're, you're allowed to speak if you'd like. Come, come on up to the, to the podium, please, and just introduce yourself in the mic for us, please.
The only thing that I wanted to mention was that, you know, you were asked about view obstruction and you only mentioned dwellings, you only mentioned houses. And I own the property right next door and I believe my view is going to be obstructed. And I also believe that there's enough room on that property to move it over to the proper setback. And I think that they're trying to get it eight foot eight from my property line to improve the view from inside the living room of that house. And although I don't have a house there right now, I may want to in the future and once this is done, then I have to live with what, what has been, what goes on before I build. So my only thing is, is I feel like I'm not being represented correctly when you say that there's only a house two doors, three doors down and one behind him on Montana. I'm here right now and I own the lot next door and I believe that it is going to be impacted.
Okay, thank you. We're not allowed to directly respond to you while you're up there, so. Thank you, appreciate the comment. If we wanted to ask staff to address that, do we need to close the public hearing first? Yeah?
If you want to get all public comments first?
Okay, were there, were there any other requests to speak? Anybody else want to, okay.
Then I would recommend closing the public hearing.
Okay, good. Then it is 6:21, we'll close the public hearing. I guess the question would be, when, when we looked at the list of qualifications, my, my,
Thank you, sir.
The list, the list of findings, was that taken into consideration, the view of neighboring properties?
Views is not one of the findings that's required to be made. The one that is, if it's a, you know, a health and public health safety issue, obviously that's one of the big ones. Or if we are proving a use that it's otherwise not allowed by the code, will be another one. But views is not one of the findings.
Okay, thank you. So this is our time to discuss this. Yeah, Joe, go ahead, please.
I have one question for the staff. What are the current setback requirements for the two adjacent parcel? One on the left, one on the right?
So the two adjacent parcels to the south are also zoned rural mountainous, so they would also be required to have a 25-foot setback.
And to add to that, because they were made legal non-conforming with the adoption of our code, they would automatically by right get to go down to 15 feet.
Anything further, Joe? Okay. Randy or Ben? So I went out to the site today and parked the car and walked up the driveway, so it looks to me like there's a single driveway, yes or no? Single driveway that goes up to both of your guys' sites, right? And yours is the one on the right as you go up and yours is the one on the left. So when I was up there, is that, you want to go back to the overview, the overhead? IT, can we go back to the, the presentation and let's look at some of the pictures? Please? But that is right, right? There's a single driveway right now and it kind of goes up and when you get to the top, it breaks off into each of your, your parcels, yeah. Okay, so, so right in between that motor home and whatever that is on the left, that road that goes up is the single driveway that goes to both of those pads. And then the arrow is pointing at the, the subject pad now that we're discussing.
If I make a point of clarification, I think that existing driveway, it's probably just within the applicant's existing property. There's, I don't think there's an official driveway for the property to the south side. Yeah, I believe there's a great difference between the northern property and, and the property adjacent to it.
Okay. Well, I guess that's not on our agenda tonight to discuss in terms of property line and stuff, so we'll, we'll go ahead and skip that. Just for reference purposes, when I got there and walked up, I thought, okay, well, this looks like a, this is what it looks like to me. So when I looked at it, it looked to me like the, the, the subject pad that we're talking about tonight, that, that steep slope on the north side is really, is pretty close. And moving, to me personally, moving the home further north or east, as it were, would be really difficult in my mind. Also, it didn't seem to me, and this is just personal, from my personal view, it didn't seem to me that the placement of that house would affect a view next door. That's just what I saw when I was up there. So just a personal, a personal thought. So I think for me, gentlemen, the biggest, the biggest determination here is that the previous zoning before the city, before we incorporated, allowed for the five-foot setback. We're at eight feet now, almost nine. And the fact that the surrounding houses are built to a five-foot setback, that kind of, kind of, kind of spells it out for me. So I don't know if you guys have any additional comments or questions.
I reviewed the site as well today and similar comments, right? And most of the view would appear to be looking westerly, which would not be affected by this placement. And the fact that the previous zoning allowed for five feet, that by right, they can go down to 15 feet and we're only going a few feet beyond that likewise would not seem to, with the way, with that slope on the north side and the way that it fits wouldn't seem to really affect it too much. So I would agree with you on that.
Anything to add, Randy? Okay. Anything to add, Joe?
I have one more question for the staff, if possible. This is my very general question. What is the possibility for the adjacent parcel owner requesting, reducing the setback to five feet like this one? And then you have two properties very close to each other on the two mountain hills. Is it a possibility?
It, I guess it really depends on the layout of the home or the proposed design, right? So that particular lot, it's obviously more flat than the other one, less constraints. So you have the ability to design something that may be able to fit with some of the requirements. But again, we didn't review that lot, we don't have the specifics, so it's, it's difficult for us to give you a specific answer.
Thank you.
Commissioner and Chair, I do also want to just mention that the findings for approval in chapter 9.110 for variances are very fact-specific. And so without an actual plan or application that's being presented, there's just really no way for staff or the commission to determine whether anything would happen on that lot.
That makes sense, thank you. And I think for tonight, the biggest finding is the fact that that, that big slope is there and that's kind of causing this whole issue. Okay, anything else to add, to discuss, guys? Nope? Okay. All right, so, so there is one resolution for adoption. We'll need a motion in a second to adopt the resolution per staff recommendations.
So moved.
Randy, I'll second. Okay, thank you. That passes four with one abstain, one, one absent. Okay, moving on to item 10, discussion items, there are none. Item number 11, Community Development Director comments. Welcome back from vacation. Do you have some fun stuff for us tonight?
Thank you, Chair, Commissioners, yes. I do have a couple of things to share with, with the group and for the benefit of the public. Couple of new parks. Last night, the city celebrated the grand opening of Underwood Park in the northeast portion of the city. In the next couple of months, we're looking forward to additional park openings. Quartz Ranch Park is underway. Quartz Ranch Park is underway at the Lennar Community over at Evans. And then Banner Park out on the east end of town at Lindenberger and Dominagoni. That one's getting very close to being completed as well. We have some new businesses that opened in the second building at Commerce Point down south of Scott. David's Toothpaste Headquarters is now located here in Menifee. We also have the Music People and a global bike manufacturer, so adding new businesses to our portfolio here and expanding our economic development. And then as you drive around town, there's definitely no shortage of new construction occurring. Popeyes on Newport is continuing. The Arco AM PM out off Getz is getting real close. Just across the street from us here, you see Chick-fil-A going vertical, so lots of activity. And then, of course, the three new industrial buildings down at Scott Commerce Center, all three of them are up. That third one, I think, went up in the last two weeks when I was on vacation, so they're, they're moving quickly there. That is my update. Happy to answer any questions.
Actually, I did, I drove by that AM PM today, because I was out at the site. I was gonna turn and go into it and it's all coned off, so how, what, what are they waiting for? What's the, the final thing that they need to, before they open their doors?
There's some landscape improvements. They haven't had all their inspections cleared by all of the departments, so it, it could be another week, two, three.
Okay. Is this you, sir? I did it again. I have you as, did you have anything that you wanted to say? Okay. The retail building's in front of the theater. You've been going back and forth with, with the property owner in terms of getting that set up and done. How close are we to seeing people out there working on those two buildings?
If you remember, back at the end of May, I believe it was, we had provided Krikorian notification that the building permits had expired, so they do need to update their building plans per the current codes. They are currently doing that effort. We actually heard from their architect today, so we're hoping to receive those plans shortly. And then, once they're reviewed and approved by the city, they can get back out there and start working after we get some engineering, site visits for the existing buildings to also determine the retrofit.
So the last I remember, I thought we were going back and forth with them in terms of the, the new plans and the way it was being done. Are you saying that the, the building permits expired in the middle of that? Weren't we going back and forth with them in terms of redesigning the whole? I thought we were.
No, they had a phasing plan that was being approved to allow the retail to go in advance of the theater, and that was approved.
And we were, that's what we were going back and forth on, the refa, the phasing? Gotcha, okay. How long is the building permit renewal process going to be? Assuming everybody's on the ball?
It's a standard plan check, seven to 10 days for the first submittal, five to seven for the second.
Okay, and so when, when do you think we could see movement on those buildings?
It, it's up to Mr. Krikorian and dependent on when we get the plan submitted. I would be hesitant to give you a date.
By the end of the year? Any other questions? Nobody, nobody else cares about this but me? I know the rest, I know the, I know the rest of the city does. I know the rest of the city is very interested. All right, thank you. Let's see, commissioner reports and committee activities. Anybody doing anything fun, exciting? Nope?
We're gonna have an MCAC meeting next month, so.
I know if. We'll, we'll get to hear some feedback from you guys after we get that meeting done. I know a few of us showed up to the groundbreaking for, was it the Boulders? Boulders, that was nice. It was hot, but it was nice. So I'm excited about that project. Any future agenda items? It is 6:34 PM, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.